Yeah, it's on YouTube and you can get to it from the city's website if you go to City Meeting TV.
Okay.
And I'm gonna go ahead and start the. Oh, Admit All, and then I'm gonna go ahead and start the recording. If you can wait until we have all the folks connected, I'll let you know.
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, it looks like we do have everyone here who was in the waiting room, so Kathy, you can go ahead and start the meeting.
I will read the important notice regarding the planning commission meeting of August 23rd. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with state of California executive orders requiring regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. Zoom is being utilized for this meeting. In case of technical issues, meetings will be uploaded to the city website as soon as possible after this meeting. We are conducting today's meeting in a virtual setting using Zoom. Planning Commission and staff are participating from remote locations practicing appropriate social distancing. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting by use of Zoom, as noted on the city's website and as noted on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to speak to the planning commission may do so during public comment or may comment on agenda items during the discussion of each item and must be logged into Zoom. Anyone using abusive, vulgar, offensive, threatening, or harassing language, personal attacks of any kind, or offensive terms that target specific individuals or groups will be muted and removed from the meeting. Please do not this new way of providing public comment. And with that, I will call this meeting to order. Director Swanswam, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, absolutely. Let's see, Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Okay, Commissioner Burns?
Here.
Commissioner Fritz?
You may be muted.
Okay.
Here.
There you go, thank you. Vice Chair Fernandez?
Here.
Thank you, and Chair Ottinger?
Here.
We have all members present tonight.
Next, we have comments from the public on items not on the agenda. So if you were here to speak on something that we are not discussing tonight on the regular agenda, now's the time to speak.
Okay, I do not see any, and we did not receive any comments for items not related to the agenda via email either.
Okay, thank you. Are there any statements of conflict of interest from planning commissioners at this time? I see Everett's hand up.
Yes, I do have a conflict of interest with item six, five B.
Okay.
And I will have to recuse myself from that item.
Okay, so you will be leaving the meeting and we'll let you know when we're finished?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, and Everett, is that the arcade alcohol use permit?
Yeah, I'm sorry, did I get?
Okay, that's six B, yeah.
Six B, okay, sorry, yeah.
Okay, moving on then, just item. Item, continue public hearing, so we're just jumping over that here, or do we?
Yes, so actually, the, yes, so we do, we haven't been able to meet with both Larry Everett, planning staff, and the neighbors at this point, so we are asking, and if you don't mind, if you continue the meeting to the August 9th planning commission meeting? That way it's, you know, so formally continued to the next meeting.
Do we need a motion to do that?
That would be great, yes.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so your motion is to continue the public hearing until the next date, Carrie, you mentioned it.
Uh, August 9th.
It has to be September, right?
September 13th.
Sorry, thank you, September, thank you.
September 13th.
September 13th.
See, this is why it's good you talk about it, otherwise everyone would be confused, yes. Continued from the August night, continued to the September 13th meeting.
Um, I will second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and second to continue the public hearing for the smokehouse barbecue use permit to August, uh, to September 13th. All in favor? Or do we do a roll call vote, sorry?
Uh, we'll do a roll since we have a couple people who are not on video. Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Fritz?
Aye.
Vice Chair Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair Ottinger?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes, and so that item will be heard on September 13th. And that give us two or three weeks to, I think we've had, Vice Chair Fernandez has had one meeting with John and the applicant, but we have not yet done the additional meeting, so that'll give us some additional time, thank you very much.
Okay, then we will move on to item 6A, which is an alcohol use permit with William Cole filled cheesemakers, and I believe, well, actually, I don't know, is the Director Swanson or Associate Director John Jay?
I'll be doing both of them tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Just to make it easier on everybody.
Thank you, I'll let you proceed.
Thank you. So the request for tonight is for an alcohol use permit to serve onsite beer and wine incidental to the commercial retail establishment. Commercial retail store currently produces and sells artists and cheeses and has been in operation in Sebastopol since December of 2016. As any business selling alcohol within city limits of Sebastopol, the municipal code requires a conditional use permit. Since there's no bona fide kitchen onsite, this request is required to be reviewed by the planning commission and not staff. As noted in the application, the operation hours will be from Thursday through Monday, from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Staff also wanted to bring the attention, bring attention to the commission that this would be another addition of an alcohol location within the Barlow and could raise concerns about over concentration within the Barlow district. However, staff does not feel that alcohol consumption, however, staff feels that alcohol consumption is incidental to the original longstanding business for this application. Staff did not receive any written comments regarding the project, however, we did receive a voicemail in regards to both items on tonight's agenda regarding concerns of too many alcohol businesses in town. And with that, that's the end of my staff report. I also have, I see Keith Adams here is the applicant and is potentially going to provide a presentation or answer questions from the commission, should you have any. Thank you.
Okay, well, let's, let's begin with questions from the commissioners of staff. Does any, are there any questions at this time, or should we move forward? Not seeing any hands raised, well, let's move forward with the applicant's presentation.
Hello.
Hello.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Keith Adams, I'm the cheesemaker and partner at William Cofield Cheesemakers. Now, we've been in production for over five and a half years at Barlow. We make British-inspired cheese primarily known for cloth-bound cheddar and a Stilton-style blue cheese. I used to live in Minnesota, so we also make fresh cheese curds, which are quite delicious, but not very British. Over the time that we've been there, we do have a small retail shop which has been open Friday through Sunday. I've been behind the counter for the vast majority of that time, and not a weekend goes by where people don't ask for cheese plates and, you know, a place to sit down and enjoy them outside. I've resisted them for a variety of reasons, namely, I wanted to focus on making cheese, but with the pandemic, the flood, and, well, I think that's enough. We, we've managed to sort of hop from lily pad to lily pad. I have a background in food and retail, and I finally decided that this is a good time to do it. What we're looking at is 16 to 20 chairs and tables out, chairs outside, cheese and charcuterie offerings on boards, a very limited menu item, essentially, a grilled cheese, tomato soup, a nice chopped salad, and raclette, which is a beautiful Swiss invention, which is roasted potatoes with melted cheese over the top. So we're not looking to be everything to everyone, but we are looking to feature our cheeses that we produce onsite as well as our neighbors in Sonoma County, and beer and wine and cider go with all of the things that we're making and presenting very well. This is a kind of a place where I don't anticipate any wild shenanigans, but more folks stopping by to enjoy a bit of food and, and a couple of drinks. We are just down the alley from Blue Ridge Kitchen, which is quite busy and our good neighbor. So we're in sort of an area that's almost self-contained, we're kind of in a courtyard down the area there, but this would be fenced off. We've done all the compliance with the ABC, and we're progressing with Sonoma County Health, I don't anticipate any problems. That's essentially it, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. So are there questions from commissioners at this time? Should I start going through the group? Vice Chair Fernandez, did you have any questions at this time?
Uh, not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Kelly?
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Okay, great. There was a mention of outdoor speakers. So is that for the outdoor seating area, or you're just using speakers that are meant for outdoors? Indoors? I know, I'm not, not being very clear, but that means that you're going to be playing music, and you said this is a confined area, so what type of music do you plan to play, and it's not live music, it's probably pre-recorded or something like that?
Yes, this would be essentially background music. I love British music, and so we have a little all-British playlist that we use, and that's essentially what would be playing in the background. It would not be anything that would bother anyone, that's not be at the level that would be any louder than our neighbors at Blue Ridge. We anticipate, you know, low decibel output, just as a, as a mood setter. What I, what I'm hoping for is the vibe is, you know, the outdoors of a British pub on a nice sunny day.
Okay, no fish and chips, though.
No, we're, we're trying to avoid a hood and an ancil system. So we're streamlined with, you know, smaller device, but I love fish and chips, but it's not gonna happen.
Right, right. Okay, that's really my only question I have right now, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burns, did you have questions at this time?
No, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Commissioner Fritz, how about you? Oh, your hand's up, thank you.
Yeah, I just had a question, just in terms of the operation, is this something, I'm assuming this is not, this isn't like a table service, it's something you would come up to the counter and order and then just take it to the table yourself kind of thing?
Yes, the idea being, instead of numbers, we'll try to be a little cheeky and have different cheeses on the placards. And again, it's a very small number of tables, but you'll order and we'll bring your, your food out to you.
Yeah, and all your tables will be contained within your kind of fence line area.
Yes, if, if you're familiar with Fern Bar and also Blue Ridge Kitchen, they have sort of small little picket fence, we're gonna match that, and then again, the sort of the British pub vibe is what we're going for.
Great, thanks, that's all the, all the questions I had.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Uh, yes, thank you. So, hello, first of all, good evening, and, and welcome. So on the proposal, you mentioned proposal to be in operation Thursday through Monday, 11 to 9:00 PM. I'm just wondering if it may be easier for you to maybe expand that, so in case, for example, let's say you want to participate in the Peestown festivities, or Tuesday, where you don't have to kind of come back, or, you know, add that, so I'm just wondering, I don't know the rest of the commissioners, how feel about this, but that perhaps you might want to make it, you know, seven days, 11 through 9:00 PM. That would be easier, or if you're just set on those hours, I'm just curious how you came up with that schedule.
I appreciate you raising that, and the, the idea behind five days is, is, I make cheese as well, and, you know, I am capable of working great many hours for an unspecified time to reach a goal. But, but to commit to seven days right off the bat seems like biting off more than I can chew. If it's allowed by the council to, or the commission rather, to allow seven days a week but not be open seven days a week immediately, that would be great. But for right now, yes, we'd very much like to be a part of Peestown, we won't catch it this year. But we'd like to catch it next year, and it, I didn't realize, well, wasn't aware that, you know, I might need to come back and ask for, for, to be open on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, which of course I'd be happy to do.
Yeah, or, that might be just an item for, for planning commission, but, yeah, if you ask for that, doesn't mean that you have to be open those, those days or those hours, you know, you're even allowed to take a vacation once a while.
January, January. But no, if it's possible to say we'd like to, the, the option to be open seven days a week, that would be great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners with questions or comments at this time? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. That means that anyone present in the audience or by Zoom can raise your actual or virtual hand to make a comment at this time. Carrie, do we see any hands coming up?
I do not, I think most of the folks here are here for the next hearing.
Do we need to hear the recorded message, or is that for the second item? There was an audio recorded message that you received.
Oh, we don't normally play those, I think John had just noted that we received a voicemail, John, can you address that?
Yeah, yeah, we received a voicemail, and then I basically gave a quick synopsis of it applying to both items for tonight's agenda.
Okay, was that in the four-page document that we just received by email?
No, that was, it was just my verbal portion of the staff report tonight.
Okay, thank you.
So that's how we handle, sorry.
Yeah, the additional comments that you got today were for the second item tonight, as they were sent in to staff after the staff report was posted to the website and sent out to the commission.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to make sure we hadn't missed anyone.
Right, so, and just to note, Chair Ottinger, what we normally do when we get a voicemail or have a conversation with somebody is we just, we noted as part of our staff presentation, so that you're aware of any concerns that we've talked to folks about, that haven't submitted an actual public comment.
Right, thank you. That being the case, I will close the public hearing at this time and come back to the commission. Does anyone have any discussion or a motion perhaps? I see Commissioner Fritz has his hand up, and Deborah Burns as well.
Yeah, thanks, I just wanted to address Everett's question, and I'm completely open to making this use permit seven days a week with the hours stated in the application. The applicant only wants to use five of those days, I think that's fine, but, you know, it gives you flexibility, and you don't have to come back to us in the future if you want to add days, so I am okay with that, and yeah, I think that's all I had to say, I, I think this is a good application, I don't have any concerns, you know, I don't have concerns about additional alcohol use, I agree, I think this is incidental, very much incidental to the basic operation, and I'm okay with approving it.
Thank you. Commissioner Burns?
I was gonna make a motion unless there's someone else who has something they need to say.
I think you should make the motion, and then we'll just.
Okay, I don't want to cut anyone off, so I would like to make a motion that we pass, that we pass this with the additional days for the business to operate, if and when they should choose to extend their hours. Carrie, was that good enough?
Yes, that's great, and, and I have marked up just to note seven days a week, 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and so that is so noted.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Is there a discussion? Commissioner Fernandez? You were muted. You're still muted.
There, can you hear me? Oh, can you hear me now? Okay, yeah, thank you, I just wanted to make comments that was brought up regarding the over-concentration. You know, I think this is in an area, it's an appropriate area where, where it should be. Also, there's a lot of different venues in that area. So it's not that what's being approved is the same type of business over and over, there's a lot of unique businesses there that offer that, whether it's cider, or beer, or wine, and, you know, just kind of the uniqueness of each of the businesses, so, you know, I'm, I'm aware of that concern, and I just kind of wanted to throw that out there, that, you know, I, I feel that it's not, not an issue, and that that is the appropriate area to have it, and that it's, you know, I think it's good to have the variety, and, you know, having additional businesses that offer the alcohol license does not mean that it's going to cause more issues, just because it's just another option, doesn't mean that it adds on to, to it as well, so I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you, and my comment would be that I would agree with that statement in this case, so. Is there further discussion on the motion? I was, I'm assuming, yeah, thank you, your hand is down, so Director Swanson, may we have the roll?
Sure. Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Fritz?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Vice Chair Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair Ottinger?
Yes.
Thank you, so the motion passes 5-0, congratulations Keith. We do have a five-day appeal period, so you'll get an approval letter, but it is not final until the end of next Tuesday, at which time you can submit any building permits or other materials you need to do.
Thank you all very much, and I hope, I hope to see you stop by.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Am I cool to go bye-bye?
Thank you for, thank you.
Take care.
Thank you, and I will also go ahead and recuse myself for the next time.
Okay.
All right, and Vice Chair Fernandez, before you leave, are you just gonna go black, or are you departing the meeting?
If you need me to stick around, I think I, I can.
I don't think we do, I mean, I can always update you on the planning director's report and other, other items later, so, okay.
I mean, I'll, I'll stick around at least for additional, that's okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 6B, which is the, an alcohol use permit by the applicant Adam Lamb.
So I wanted to make a quick note that the address that I have in the staff report is incorrect. It's 6780 Depot Street, not McKinley Street. Applicant noted that out to me yesterday, so I wanted to make sure that we have that correctly before we move forward. But with that, the project proposed is to open a 80s and 90s-themed arcade bar, which includes pinball machines, arcade boxes, and a self-serve beer wall. The Rewind will host roughly 30 to 40 arcade machines in a beer wall, providing 20 taps from local breweries. There will be no onsite food, but the Rewind will work with other restaurants within the Barlow to provide food to those customers, which has been a operation amongst other Barlow applicants. The project proposed is to be open daily from 9:00 AM to 12:00 AM, as noted in the application. However, the applicant did reach out to me yesterday after the staff report was completed to request the hours be extended to 2:00 AM. One of the options listed in the staff report for the commission to consider is the increase of additional parking requirements. As the Barlow is required to provide one space per 500 square feet of floor area, this use would be required to supply 4.6 spaces. However, a bar and any other approved location within the city would be required to provide one space for 65 square feet of floor area, or 35 total spaces. The planning commission with any use permit does have the authority to require additional parking up to 24, 20% of more than what's required. Currently, the Barlow would have enough overflow parking spaces to accommodate both the 4.6 spaces or the 35 spaces. However, staff did want the commission to consider this as, and to determine what the appropriate parking should be allocated for this use. With that, I will conclude my staff report. I also have Adam, the applicant, and Ed, who is his partner doing the beer wall portion of the project, so I will hand it over to them.
Okay, I see that we have questions from some commissioners right now of staff. So Commissioner Burns, you have a question?
Yeah, I actually drove by the address for both of the, you know, it was right by the cheese place, I thought, so can you just tell me where exactly it is now? I'm not, I wasn't.
Yeah, so it's between the Fern Bar and the Woodford, in that.
Between the Fern Bar, I didn't know there was anything open there, okay, got it, thank you.
Back portion, I believe, of, yeah, so the back part of Depot Street there.
I'm trying to picture that, like where the juice place used to be?
There's actually some photographs.
You know what, that's fine, I'll, I'll, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it's kind of right across from the Foundry Parking Lot, Scout, which I believe is a clothing store, used to be there.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, Woodford is here, and the Fern Bar is back here, and so it's kind of right in between.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions at this time of staff before we go on to the applicant? Okay. So, I'm sorry, Adam Lamb. You have the floor at this time.
Okay, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Hi, everybody, thanks for making this meeting. So I just wanted to, oh, John, I was wondering if you're gonna put the PowerPoint up, or am I just gonna speak without that?
Uh, no, we can go ahead and put that up. Carrie, do you mind sharing that real quick, please? Thank you. All right, Adam, you're good to go, just let us know when you need to move the page.
Okay, great. Hi, my name's Adam Lamb, I'm the owner-operator.
I'm the owner-operator of the Rewind Sebastable. I was, my background is that I was born and raised in San Francisco. And I have been basically lived and grew up with arcades my whole life and pinball. And I moved to Sonoma County in probably about five years ago. We love the area because of the family atmosphere, just kind of get, just kind of wanted to move our family away from kind of the urban center of San Francisco, which was a big change for me. We are current, my two kids are currently going to Grammstein Elementary, you know, and we, they are seven and nine. Her names are Irving and Ginger. And we are very, very involved with the Grammstein Elementary School. We really just love the school and what they've done for our kids and just the atmosphere that the school has given us. My wife has been very active in the Grammstein Parent. Can we move on to the next slide? Sorry, that was, this is my logo. So have you seen the logo? GPA is Grammstein Parent Association. We've, my wife has been very, very active in the, she's also on the call too. They've been, she's been super active in, and actually just with the financial part or the treasure part of of the Grammstein Parent Association, because there's, they've just been needing a lot of help in terms of the enrichment program and just in general on the treasure side of things. Can we go to the next slide? So next slide is really, so I've, I've been kind of, I kind of came into this new passion as a forty-year-old or probably, and I've actually become a retro arcade collector within the last two or three years. I, it's kind of started from one pinball to one arcade, and then it's grown to twenty to forty to sixty to eighty and up to a hundred. And now I'm probably at a hundred and fifty retro arcade and pinball machines at this point in time. I've, I basically live and breathe this stuff now. A lot of my friends and a lot of the community has really supported me through thick and thin. So therefore, my dream and my inspiration has really been to to bring this kind of retro arcade and chamber venue to Sonoma County to the public, because I've seen it in other places like in San Jose, San Francisco in particular, there's a few there. And I wanted to also create a space where I can enjoy this with my kids and also share that with other people, that they can share the golden age of arcade and pinball and be in a safe place and really just kind of connect together through all different kinds of age levels. Can I go to the next slide? I look at the, my concept is really more about an experience. And I also, with this in combination with serving beer, my focus is also to have a family-friendly environment that can connect to all age levels from zero to eighty. I, I believe that if a six-year-old comes in there and they're, and they see the pinballs and from their era or even just pinballs in general, it really brings people back to an experience that we, we grew up with as, as a young child. And I really believe that, you know, that, I also know that because when I was a young child, I really, really, really identified with that because I grew up in, you know, in bowling alleys and convenience stores with this really was a focal point of my life and was really enjoyable to me. And as I kind of have been partaking in this kind of arcade and pinball culture, I have realized that there's a very large community of people of all ages, and they have been the most wonderful people that I've encountered, and I can really, and I make serious connections with these people. I've, and I want this, this place to bring that kind of magic, where pinball and arcade enthusiasts can participate in and connect in events and pinball leagues, and there's just so many different ways that this can be, I guess, shared in terms of events and leagues and competitive nature. Of course, it's always friendly. Can I go to the next slide? The general plan is just the concept of, of course, the eighties and nineties retro arcade entertainment venue, which is the core with the self, with self-pour beer wall concept. And I mean, in general, I think that, I asked Ed to join this on, on this actual thing, he will explain more in depth of how the self-pour beer wall will be actually executed. And so basically, the arcades and pinballs will use a card reader, which, which will basically be used from a self-kiosk, and they can add as much money they want or spend as much money they would want with the actual card reader, card, card reader that, that they, you take a card from the kiosk and then you can use it for each game that you want to use. So, for example, arcades would be fifty cents and pinballs would be a dollar. That's not like actually set in stone, but that's just an example of how it would work. The self-pure pour beer wall will also use an RFID card that guests can use after their ID is scanned. So they scan their ID and then they can, they can access the beer wall. Non-alcoholic beverages will be available, and I've been talking about with Ed, and we've been thinking about actually, actually separating non-alcoholic beverages from the beer wall in general, so that we can kind of mitigate the underage drinking. I just wanted to let you know that safety is my number one priority. And staff will always be assigned and will never, and be, we will always be assigned to ensure no underage drinking at home. Next slide, please. Just to give you guys, I'm not sure if anyone has ever been to a retro arcade before, so I don't have any renderings at this point, but I, I just pulled some photos online, kind of get, kind of give you an idea of what existing retro arcades look like. So we have Level Up, we have these, there's a couple, the bottom ones are actually the Emporium, which is like this really large space that, you know, they have a lot of retro arcades. And the space that I have is probably roughly around two thousand square feet, so it's gonna be a very small space with, with retro arcades inside. So there, it's, it's, and so it'd be kind of compact. It wouldn't be as big as this. However, just, just could this, these pictures kind of give you an idea of what the retro arcades look like and what mine possibly would look like. But I'm not saying that it would actually look like these. Next slide. Food co-op options at the Barlow. These are the probably my preferred, well, not preferred, but these are options that people can order. So I've been to the Barlow many times and I've talked to, you know, these different, these different food vendors, and they've said that they basically put a, you know, like a square station at their at the place that wants to have food, and they just order food and then the food gets delivered over. So these are the kind of options that can be food options for the Rewind Arcade. Next slide. So since we're reopening after nine p.m., I've talked to the Barlow about possibly bringing, about bringing in food trucks after, and they said as long as it's not competing with any of the existing food places. I've also talked to each of, a lot of these, the individual actual food trucks, and they said they expressed great interest in being a part of this. Also because they love arcades and also they can also, you know, get business from being at, being at the actual venue, arcade venue. Next slide. Why adopt? So I'm just giving, wanted to give you my, my personal, my personal take about why I adopt self-pour beer technology. I really believe that this is a great option to have with this concept of retro arcade, because it just creates a nice, fresh festive environment. It's different from the other arcades that are out there, gets people really excited about being there. And in addition, secondly, beverage techno, this, this kind of technology and the arcade kind of link, in my personal view, they, they link to like this, the future and change and, and progressiveness in terms of how the, you know, the future is gonna be, because that's always been kind of like the, how you say that, it's all about thinking about fantasy when you're in the arcade, you know, when you're in spaceships or when you're in. It's really talking about the future and what's the future gonna be like. So I also felt like this kind of technology would really fit this kind of concept in terms of what I would like to do. I, I feel that, lastly, the last point here before I move on was that I felt like it's safer than a traditional bar serving alcohol, because the staff would be more, would be, wouldn't be actually pouring the beer. They would actually be mitigating and observing the people who are drinking and really making sure that this is a safe and functional and responsible way of basically dispensing alcohol. People also have the option to not drink alcohol, which is fine. And there is also the point that I've been thinking about was that people are going to be, be gonna, going to be focused on activity. The main activity is arcades, games, pinball, really, really getting into an activity. And they have options, many options for beverages and options for food with my co-op partners and possible food trucks. So I wanted to pass this on to Ed, if he's ready with his PowerPoint. Are you, I guess Ed is going to, Ed Lazaric is the, basically, the vendor or the technology partner who is going to be, going to be putting, executing this whole self-beer, self-pour beer wall technology with my business. So Ed, take it on.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Yeah, hi, everybody. And I just, Adam invited me, got to explain more about what our system does, just because a lot of people aren't really aware of it yet. So I just, I can go through these pretty quickly, just to save some time. But just on the next slide, I just have some information about who we are and what we do. We were founded in the Chicago area in 2010, and we're now up to thirty employees with about four hundred customers worldwide with over twelve thousand taps pouring. And our team and our founder, especially, we always love to say we're at the intersection of community and convenience. It really fosters what one of our customers called experiential magic, so customers can kind of go on a tasting journey, and they can walk through the taps and read about what's on tap and try things, you know, and you can pour just a small amount and taste it. You can, you can walk around tasting, and I think there's already a venue at the Barlow that does wine this way. So it's, it's very much the same thing. It's just with beer or anything kegged can be dispensed. In this case, Adam's doing beer and maybe some ciders. And we have it installed for customers in all types of businesses, restaurants, tap rooms, hotels, it's even in airports, dog parks, bowling alleys, arcades. We do have a number of arcades, so I'll show you in a minute, golf clubs, grocery stores. And in all of our time with all of our customers, we, we haven't had any incidents reported at all of underage drinking associated with the technology. So it really, and I'll, I'll get into some of the details on how it works in the, in the next couple of slides here. It just kind of changes the dynamics of things a little bit and just makes it more convenient and, and quick to, to get something and get back to the games, I think. And on the next slide is just a little bit, some logos of where we're installed, where most of our customers are independent operators like Adam. You know, they're putting life savings into a project and opening, opening something up to share with the community, but we all also have people like Whole Foods. Dave and Buster's is a customer of ours, Caesar's Entertainment, some of the Armed Forces, and they've all kind of done, you know, studies and dug into our system and and our team and selected us, so we're really proud of that. And then on the next slide, I think I have just how, how it works, and I did a link to a video here, which may or may not work. But I can just walk through it step by step, and then maybe we could watch the video, but I just wanted to, you know, point out it's, it's not an unmanned system. So guests walk in as far as what the workflow and customer flow is like. There would be a, a desk, a host desk, and everyone there would have to, guests would have to check in. They show their ID, and our system actually has a little scanner that the staff can use that, that makes sure the person is of age. So it'll blink, you know, red or green for them, and then the staff opens up a tab for that guest. And the customer can take that RFID, which the staff gives them, and just walk up to the tap wall, and they can browse the screens. You can actually touch a logo of a beverage, and it pulls up tasting notes, so you can read about it, and then you can simply insert the RFID card in a little reader below the screen, and that activates those taps, and then you can pour a taste or a half glass, full glass, anything in between. So in that way, it kind of creates this tasting journey. You can, you can walk around sampling things, and you don't have to pour a full glass or ask for a full glass. And it has a responsibility limit that triggers after two servings. It shuts you off as a guest, and then you would have to see a staff member to get reactivated or to close out. And at that point, obviously, the staff has a way to decide if they want to reactivate the card or not, or the RFID fob, whatever it is they're using. And I don't know if the, yeah, if the video played, but we, we don't really have to play it. We could just keep.
I tried it, it didn't.
It didn't, yeah, you don't have to control.
Let me, let me, let me try.
Control click, and if we're short on time, we can, we can skip it.
Yeah, it's not.
Okay, yeah.
I can always go to the website if people want to see it.
That's right. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to go through the safety aspect, since I know, you know, that usually is the first question people ask. So just to run through these, these bullets, you know, like I mentioned in the previous slide, it has an automated responsibility limit that triggers after two servings, and you can actually set the serving size for each beverage. So, for example, if you have just a, a normal light beer on tap number one, you could make that serving size sixteen ounces, a pint, which is a normal serving size. And then if you have, I don't know, let's say on tap number two, like a, an oatmeal stout or something that's a little higher ABV, you would make the serving size ten ounces or eight ounces, you know, something less. And then the system can fractionally calculate as people are walking down the tap wall trying things, when they get to two official liquor board servings. So it won't give them, you know, thirty-two ounces of a heavy-duty oatmeal stout. It'll just give them the sixteen ounces. So in that way, it, it assists the staff in kind of policing the area. The system doesn't make payments, I'm sorry, doesn't take payments or provide self-check-in, self-checkout. That all must be done by a staff member. And we feel because staff doesn't have to process transactions and pour drinks or mix drinks behind a bar, they're out in front of the bar, there is no bar. So they're with guests and they're interacting with them, and it's much easier for the staff to keep an eye on things and just make sure everyone's safe. So in that way, you know, we feel it's safer, and it also, there's obviously no pitchers or bottles of wine that are served, which can lead to, to incidents as well. So that picture is just showing the screen with the message that you have to see a friendly staff member, you've been deactivated. So. And on the next screen, this is actually a photo from, from a Whole Foods in Greenpoint, Brooklyn. And they have a, the guy in the cap there is a tap wall ambassador, and this is what most all of our customers do. There's someone there, so he's basically the bartender, but there's no bar, you know, and he's free to just talk to people and answer questions, tell them about what's on tap, help them if they have questions on how to pour, and they're also, you know, the ones supervising that area, making sure there's no underage people there pouring, and also making sure if people do hit their limit, that they're okay to proceed. So they would have tips training, you know, on safe alcohol serving. And let's see, on the next slide, I think I just have, yeah, we can just scroll through these pretty quickly. I just wanted to show you some other locations. We have a couple in California. We've got, this is a really fun place called The Coin House, and they have fifty taps. It's in a quiet neighborhood where people walk there, La Mesa, and they have a bunch of really fun games. And on the next slide, I think we have Dave and Buster's. They're also down in San Diego. And then on the next slide, I've got a really, this is a cool spot in Minnesota. Too bad our previous person's still not on, who's from Minnesota. This is in St. Paul. It was founded by an artist collective, and they were the first arts-based, public benefit corporation in Minnesota, and they have indoor putt-putt golf. They have all sorts of really cool whimsical art installations that rotate. Indoor putt-putt golf, they have all sorts of really cool whimsical art installations that rotate out. Uh, and they have arcade games as well, and they have our tap wall there, uh, also. And let's see, I think there's just a couple more, and that's basically it, yeah, there's one in, uh, independently owned in Bisbach, North Dakota, they're also in love with the. The eighties and nineties retro games, and then I think the last one, let's see, maybe that was, no, one more. Uh, Goolsby's in Manhattan, Kansas, and we do have a lot more, these are just the ones I was able to, to pull up, they have duck pen bowling, actually, and, and also arcade games. So. And then there's some, some pictures of our team. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to, to answer about, you know, how the system works or anything like that.
Thank you, that was really exciting. It's not the fun place to go. Um, I see Commissioner Burns' hands up already.
Yeah, I do have a quick question for you. First of all, thank you so much, both of you, for your presentation, I have two. Now adult daughters who wished we had something like this in Sabato when they were growing up, and I've been to the barcades. In San Francisco and Chicago, it's something we actually do, so I really appreciate it and I'm excited about the opportunity. I do have a question about the safety, um, something that was said in the first part of the presentation. Where you're thinking about separating the walls so that the alcoholic beverages are in one part. And the non-alcoholic beverages are in another part, that actually concerned me a little bit. Because, you know, teenagers are really good at getting around those things, so is there a way that when you get your beverage card? So I have two questions, when you get your beverage card, that it could either activate the alcohol? Or, you know, or not alcohol, or not activate the alcohol wall, so it wasn't just divided by walls. But it was also divided by access, um, once you were checked in and your ID was looked at. And then my next question is, um, is, um. Oh my gosh, no, I can't remember, well, let me, let you answer that one and then I'll ask you my next.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, that definitely, I agree, yeah, that, that, that would be problematic, yeah, so it would be, you know, if you have. And right now, how Adam's gonna open is if you get an RFID card, uh, it's only gonna be for alcoholic beverages. And then w- we are, uh, about halfway through programming, uh, the feature where you can have a, you know, a kid's card or an adult card. And the kid's card only works on the sodas, um, and you can actually have them printed differently too, so you can recognize the difference, um. But I, you know, out, out of the gate, and it'll probably ready, actually, that feature will be ready by the time the build-out's done, but, you know, if not, I'm assuming, Adam, you'll. You'll just, you know, sell soda separately, yeah, but not with a card.
Thank you, and then my other question was, um, you know, you would, I don't know if you were just. You know, this was just kind of referencing any price, but you had mentioned, you know, games being fifty cents and pinball being a dollar. And, you know, just, you know, wondering, worrying about struggling families and wanting to create this kind of community. And a place where families can come, I know most of the barcades that I've been to and the ones in San Francisco. Are not quite that expensive, because I imagine if I had two young children again and a pinball game, I mean, you know, you can. You can lose pinball in less than two seconds, um, or, you know, so I was just wondering if there's a way that. You know, just looking at the cost effectiveness for families and being able to enjoy a period of, of time there. Or if that was just kind of a example you were giving of what the price might be.
Well, I guess that's a question for me, right?
Yeah, that's a question for you.
Okay, um, so, yeah, so we're just thinking about that in terms of, well, basically. The way I look at it now is that when I was, I don't know, ten years old, I had to pay a quarter for pinball. Or, I had to pay seventy-five cents for pinball, right, or a quarter for arcades, right? So a quarter now is probably worth like seventy-five cents right now, right? So, um, I don't know if that e- exactly identifies what your initial question is, but, um. We, there is ways that, basically how it works with, the, with the RFID card reader. You can set different, different prices for different times, you can have happy hours, you can have. Kids' family night for two hours and it could be all in free play, so there's many ways that you can actually customize the system. So that, for example, if there was. If there is more, if you wanted to have some more customization in terms of pricing, in terms of people who are, it could be people that are. You know, are not as, you know, not as, I cannot pay that much, not, and I'm, you know, there's many ways that you can be creative. Um, Fanny would like to, to chime in on this question too. Sorry, let me.
Hi, everyone.
Whoops, well, thank you guys, um, sorry, I just feel like there's a lot of struggling families right now. Who would love to have fun at an arcade, but that would be, you know, go fast if you have several kids and.
So, um, I understand that, and, um, first of all, the pricing was references with all the places in Sonoma County. And my kids also love, okay, so we went, we go to multiple places for like birthday party, rebounders. Uh, Apex Centers and even like, you know, Chuck E. Cheese, Scandia, the price is minimum fifty cents. And the reason why pinball has to be more expensive, it just, the cost of pinball at least cost ten thousand dollars for a new one right now. For old one, it can be like five thousand dollars, but it takes a lot of fixing and it breaks down continuously, so it takes a lot of cost to repair. And that's why we consider that pinball would cost more, and if you go to the city, they serve more pinballs, it would also be more expensive, so. This is pretty much market price, um, it's way cheaper than what San Francisco charge. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is that I, I introduce a little bit of myself, so I, um. My, my, my day job is actually, I work for a nonprofit, and we serve under privileged families in San Francisco. Uh, my organization is APA Family Support Services, I'm the executive director, and we serve eight thousand underprivileged, low-income family in San Francisco. So I totally understand how difficult it is to serve a family, how difficult it is to raise family and have some fun, and so, um. In our business proposal, we actually, you know, wrote out something that, you know, if we have profit, we will need, create an annual. Community parties that give free passes to low-income family to enjoy a day of, you know, um, events and play games. That they can just come and enjoy, um, I'm a fan of, I'm a fan of serving families, because I feel like nowadays it's very challenging. Um, and it's, it's very, um, blessed that we have that ability to share the, you know, the joy and the. And the ability to, um, serve other family in need, and, you know, it's, we just don't know when we will. Have difficulty times, and when we were, and when, when, when we were, you know, have young kids and we were having difficulties in terms of financials. Um, we also get a lot of help from the community, so I really wanted to give back to the community, and so that was one part of our business plan too.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Other questions from commissioners? I see Commissioner Fritz.
Thanks, yeah, um, I, I did have, I just wanted to go back to the, um. Question about having separate possible alcohol, non-alcoholic cards for, you know, under twenty-one, it sounded like that might not. Technology might not be ready when you open, so I'm just wondering what the kind of alternate plan would be for serving. Um, non-alcoholic beverages, if you don't have the kind of separate card option when you open. Will, will, will staff handle the non-alcoholic beverages on their own, you know, separately, or how does, how do you envision that working?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, so the only people with a RFID, you know, would be, uh, a tap wall or RFID, I should say. Which is a separate one from the, the game one, uh, would be an adult, and then the staff would serve. Uh, you know, cans and bottles or, or, or draft sodas, and actually, it would, it would probably be draft, because you could have the. Standard soda machine, and then, um, our system actually just hooks in and, and controls that, once we have the, the way to partition. Under and over twenty-one, so.
Okay, um, and then my other questions, my other questions. Yeah, I think that was, actually, that was my only question for now, thank you.
Thank you, um, Commissioner Kelly, did you have questions at this time?
I do, thank you, um, just so you know, in LA, I grew up, um, outside. Right on the border of, um, Koreatown and near downtown LA. And I was around the corner from a, a pinball repair shop, so, um. Watched the trucks come and deliver them, and, and I certainly, uh, did a little bit of pinballing back in the day. Um, this would be in the sixties and seventies, um, so, my question is. Um, what hours do you plan to, um, have alcohol available? That's a long time from nine to two AM.
Hi, um, this, this question is for me, um, I actually, the reason why I wanted to open up earlier in the morning was to possibly do. Um, coffee in the morning and shut off the taps, and then the beverage, alcoholic beverages would start around twelve. And then go on to, um, twelve to twelve, or twelve to two, or whatever we can open till we decide that we're open to. So I, I would like to turn off taps in the morning, but sometimes I wanted to give people an option. To be able to play pinball and arcade in the morning if they, they're morning people, because I noticed a lot of people in the Sabato are always. Hop out up in the morning, kind of doing stuff, so maybe I could give them a good option, um, to, to do that in the morning, thank you.
Um, and also, I, I'm just gonna ask you one question at a time here, so what kind of seating are you planning to provide? If people want to bring in food, they wanna, you know, have a place, uh, of course, to have their beverages. Um, what do you, what is your plan for that?
Uh, my plan is to have tall boys, which is our, kind of like the, the circular tall boys and, and kind of higher-end seating. Um, lo- located like in, possibly in front of the beer wall, so it would be places so people can grab their beer, and then they can also. Um, you know, just go from the be- beer wall to, to the, to the, to right in front of that area and, and enjoy a drink, enjoy a beverage. Um, and also, I probably would, I would like to separate, like, also s- kind of spread them out along the, around the arcade. But the, this, the square footage is about two thousand square feet, so, um, it would just be nice, it would, I just want you to like, basically. Put them, spread these circular two-person tall tops around the arcade. Um, I'm thinking in maybe, I'm not sure exactly how many, but, um, those, that's what's the general idea. Um, and I would also be changing things as I saw fit, depending on what the preferences and kind of what the layout would. Kind of go around, because I think the, the layout of the arcade and, and the chairs will change depending on, you know. Really, depending on how things are kind of going with the business.
And when, um, people use your, um, your beer wall. Um, I know we just are coming through this pandemic, well, it's not over yet, and, um. Wondering what kind of sanitation for areas that are being touched frequently, I mean, we even have the, the MPOCs now. And, um, you know, um, so I'm, I'm hoping that, um, you got that built in at this point. And flu season will be starting soon, of course, we can't control everything, but anything that's a high-touch area. I think raises a little concern.
Yeah, that, and the, the tap wall ambassador, that's where they come in as well, you know, during the height of the pandemic, uh, our customers had their tap wall ambassadors. Cleaning the, the handles, you know, frequently, um, a lot of people use. Tapkins, they even named, you know, so you grab a tissue and, and pull the tap with that, uh, and, and then we never put. Uh, glass rinsers on the drip trays, which, you know, some, uh, behind the bar, you see bartenders spraying a glass. With a, a rinser that comes up, so that's, that's not in there, uh, you can't do that, because that, you know, obviously, you're touching a glass that someone might have. Drank with before, so, uh, that's eliminated.
Okay, very interesting concept here, so, um, what about if people only use cash? How do you, are you able to accommodate that?
Yeah, people are running a, a tab, at least with, uh, you know, on the beer wall side, and I let Adam talk to the, to the arcade side, um, but, you know, they could cash out. With, with charge or cash, depending on what point of sale you're using.
Okay, I know there's a lot of, but, lot of going away from cash and, um, what, just consciousness around. Um, being able to still legally use cash in the future, looks less and less like we're going to, but. Might as well delay it as long as we can, um, then in terms of you not providing food. And hopefully, you know, folks will be able to afford the order from surrounding businesses, but I'd recommend. That you just have snacks available as well, because when people are drinking. You know, even a bag of cashews or peanuts or something like that is helpful, and, um. I'm wondering if you have any, um, plans to do something very small like that, in fact, I should have asked city staff. If, um, if it's, if, if they're required to have snacks or sandwiches or something. But they're using the outside, um, vendors in the area, um, does that satisfy that requirement? All right, I'm gonna, yeah, ask Jay or, um, Harry.
Yeah, I can answer that, um, so yes, using outside vendors does, um, satisfy it, as does, uh, using the food trucks. Um, and actually, you know, in terms of affordability, I, I realize it may be later at night, but usually food trucks tend to be a little bit more affordable. Since they're not renting a, a space, so, um, that's certainly a, a venue for that.
Can I ask a quick clarification on that? Does that mean, uh, what bars do with popcorn and nuts, those are not required?
We require, no, we, because we require actual meals be provided. As opposed to just snacks, which most bars do, so actually, when COVID started. None of our bars had problems with the changes in the regulations. Um, which you could only do the alcohol stuff if you were, um, in certain ways, if you had food. And none of our venues had any problems, because we require full, full food, uh, fair be served, so like, uh, us, Adam, I, I think, Sean, like. Acre, uh, pizza, and I don't know if they do pizza by the slicer, if it's the full pies, um, but, you know, those types of things.
Okay. Did you have more questions, Linda?
I'm looking at my notes here real quick, I think we covered most of them, I didn't get an answer if, if they would, um. Recommend, I mean, if I could, you know, recommend still providing snacks, because I think a lot of people aren't gonna be able to afford. If the food trucks come and we did, you know, change our rules around having, um, food trucks, um, that would be great. Um, sometimes they don't get enough business, they start out and then don't continue, so I'm looking for contingencies.
Um.
Yes, and Commissioner Kelly, I can, sorry, I didn't realize the, let me address that, uh, question. This is a conditional use permit, so the planning commission, um, can place any additional conditions that it, it finds appropriate. Um, to ensure the successful, uh, and compliance with our criteria. Which includes responsible beverage service and, and things like that, so to answer, that's a long explanation of, yes, you could require snacks be offered as well.
Okay, I think.
They, they don't need to be free, but they, they do need, you could require that they be offered.
Okay, um, I think we didn't talk about parking requirements, um, at this point in terms of. What staff is recommending, it's, the staff report sort of dropped off in terms of the parking segment as to how many. You recommend, um, I know that the Barlow can accommodate it, but I'm sure at some point, there's a little bit of a tally going on. To make sure that it can, can continue, but, um, with the new parking across the street being proposed. Off Morse, then, you know, things will ease up anyhow, but, um, so I don't know if we need to discuss that. Um, and, um, like to, like to hear from the public.
Okay, I see Commissioner Burns has her hand up again.
Yeah, I just have one other question. Thinking of the extension, you know, even at midnight, actually, there's nothing open that late in Sebastopol. So again, something the kids are going to love, my kids would have loved this. But what about safety in the parking? You know, what type of lighting is there? How far would they have to park from the barcade? And is the lighting on at 2:00 AM? Because, you know, think, is it, is it on that late? And what would the safety issues be around walking to your car, especially if, you know, there's young people out there late?
It looks like Yolanda from the Barlow is here, so she might be able to answer that question better than we can.
I was on mute for a second there, sorry about that. So we have lights at the Barlow. Every building has light fixtures around, you know, the entire building and walkways. And then our parking lots are also lit. And the, all of our lights turn on by automatic timer, and we just actually replaced them to have a battery backup as well, so that if there's power failure, we don't have to go back to the side and reset all of our timers. So that's an improvement we just recently made. But the lights do turn on 30 minutes before sunset, and then they turn off 30 minutes after sunrise. So the property is lit, particularly by Rewind Barcade on that section of McKinley, from Woodford, crossing the street to PAX, Barge North, and Rust. There's also a lot of market lights that really, really light up that area. So the property is very well lit. There is parking in that area, and I think that most of the parking, if not all of the parking, is going to be empty, especially when, when it does get later into the evening, since businesses surrounding do close. And so there is parking right across the street, directly in front of the building, and right around the corner on Depot Street, where the old Center for the Arts building used to be. And then, you know, throughout the rest of the campus, you know, depending on where someone wants to park, every walkway is well lit.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we're still at the point where the commissioners are asking questions of the applicant. So the public hearing isn't open at this time. Commissioner Fritz, I see your hand is up.
Thanks. Yeah, I just want to know if you could maybe explain the staffing a little bit. Ed talked about, you know, the wall ambassador, and there obviously would be someone, you know, checking people in. I'm just wondering, will there be other people just kind of circulating around? Or how many people do you expect to be kind of staffing? You know, I'm sure it probably changes throughout the day, but, you know, kind of at your busiest time, what would you expect the kind of staffing levels to be? Hi, yeah, thanks for that question, Paul. So I'm thinking about probably, well, we already know what the roles are. The roles are basically check-in person, beer ambassador, and then at least one other person to make sure that everyone is around. And likely, I'm probably going to be there also. So it'll be around three or four people, including myself. But at least three, because, you know, because they're, without, you know, without taking the bar, our bartender part of it, it leaves a lot of, like, the, most of the time, the other people besides the check-in person are going to be supervising. And also, we need someone to restock glasses at the actual beer wall. So we need to make sure everything is properly stocked, and there's actually a lot of activities that are going on. I think Ed can actually kind of chime in on this, because, you know, there's different comparisons about traditional bar and about staffing. And do you just, does something eliminate all the staff? And that's actually not the case, which Ed has shared with me. Do you want to chime in on that?
Yeah, no, you're right. It's just the one person checking people in, and then they usually have visual line of sight at the tap wall as well. And then you've got your tap wall ambassador. And, you know, like, for example, Coin House down in San Diego, La Mesa, it does get very quiet there during the day, so they just have two staff members there. And sometimes they go down to one, which, you know, is really when it's super quiet, I guess. But, yeah, I think two, you know, two at the minimum is a good number, and then Adam would be circulating with the games, so.
Thanks. That's all I had.
Then I have a few questions too. Again, the question about parking, where we would want to add that to the spaces that we're using up as new businesses expand. But for the applicant, I was concerned that one of the suggestions that staff has made was the recommendation that we not allow the self-service option and require the applicant provide a traditional bartender. And I just wondered if you could make comments on your experience or whether this would work for your business? Is this something that would destroy your business plan? Could you just talk to me a little bit about that?
Okay, so I guess that's for me. I wouldn't say it would destroy my business plan, but it is really the most ideal concept I would like for my business. We've had, I think that I'm, the way my mindset is, is really focusing on safety, which I think is, I want more people's eyes on people instead of actually people serving beer, you know, and also being more proactive about being around. Because I, you know, my number one priority is safety. So I prefer this for that reason. So it wouldn't destroy my business, but it would, it wouldn't be the most ideal.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to hear that from you at this time. You mentioned that the tables and chairs would be the tall boys, and I was wondering whether they're, these tables are scattered about, and whether you would consider having some shorter tables? Because some people who bring in their children might need them. I know you're going to adjust as, as you find fit with your clientele. But I guess I was just wondering whether they were only going to be the tall boys.
So the answer to that is, is it will be whatever my client, the clientele needs, if there needs, if there's a large set. So they, I also want to bring, I don't know if you guys remember these cocktail arcades where they're like super low, so they're kind of like cocktail arcades. I have a multitude of these that I'll probably be, also be put there, so people can be playing games and having a drink on the table and enjoying the games, which is more ideal for the kids. I can also, basically, I'm, depends on what the needs of my customers, I'm willing to make any kind of, you know, supply any kind of seating arrangement that would be, would be, fill the needs of my customer.
Because I was thinking when I've played arcade games, you really need someplace to put the beer down. You just, you just can't put it on the machine, right? So I thought some other options.
And sure, I'm sure on that one, there will need to be ADA accommodations as well. And generally, that does mean lower tables and tables where spaces where people can pull off a wheelchair or something. So I think they're, you know, while the, the fuel may be the higher table, I'm sure it will be an assortment of them.
Yeah. So everyone else has asked a lot of my questions. I was, again, you were mentioning having coffee in the mornings. Had you considered at all having snacks of some sort available for people?
So I, I would explore, I think I've thought about many different things. I was thinking, I'm really into Japanese culture, so I was thinking of possible machi, well, I was thinking about either a vending machine that can basically self-serve, they can get any kind of snacks they want. I'm open to many different kind of, I've had, actually had, went to a vending machine where I can get a, I can get a chocolate croissant. And that has, you know, and baked goods, just by scanning my card and getting something from like that. So I'm open to getting, putting vending machines in there or offering some kind of packaged Japanese snacks. Or whatever people would, you know, would be interested in the morning, or actually anytime, really.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions or from commissioners of the applicant at this time? Seeing none, then I will open the public hearing. So if there are members of the public, yes, thank you, raise your virtual or actual hands.
Thank you. And just a note, as I noted at the beginning of the meeting, we do not have a timer on the screen tonight, but we do have three minutes per speaker, and I will let you know when there is 30 seconds remaining. So I see Lucio Hernandez, you have your hand raised, if you can unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, please go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to chime in and share my support for the business concept of Rewind. I am a passable resident. I've lived here for a little over five years now. I'm very involved in the community. I'm a Boy Scouts leader. My wife is the president of the GPA, and that's how we met, the LAMS. Our kids go to the same school, to Gravestein. I also happen to work in the wine industry. I'm a director of business intelligence and production systems in Sonoma County. And so in my line of work, I focus a lot on enabling data consumers to self-serve. And I'm constantly looking at how we can leverage technology to improve the decision-making, the wine-making process. I believe that the consumer experience of getting a drink is overdue for a change. And combining this idea with an arcade atmosphere will create a unique family environment that just doesn't exist in Sebastopol today. I often have to take my kids to Scandia to go play arcades or, you know, keep them busy on a Saturday afternoon. So having something like this in town would be fantastic. It would allow me to keep my tax dollars in Sebastopol, which we love. So I think that, you know, bringing the technology and, you know, allowing people to expose, at least for me, expose my kids to the retro game, which I grew up loving as a child, is a win-win for the community. And I'm aware that there are, you know, numerous successful businesses that have embraced this type of concept. In the Bay Area, there's So Hotel. In San Jose, there's Blast and Brew, and others in Pleasanton as well. So I just wanted to say that I'm looking forward to the experience, looking forward to having that opportunity to expose my kids to the retro gaming community and having, get a little taste of what gaming used to be like when we were kids. And I also look forward to the fact that I won't have to wait at a bar for a bartender who's made, to make his way towards me, just so I can get a drink and then go back to playing games and having fun with my friends. So I hope that the planning commission can embrace the technology, embrace the idea, and welcome the Rewind to Sonoma County. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lucio.
And I do not see any other public comments, but I will ask John to just summarize what was in the staff report and the comments that we received towards the end of today.
Yeah, so the comments in the staff report were included, basically. And then we also received comments that were sent out to the planning commission and also uploaded on our website from the, from members of the public after that staff report was put on the website. And circling back to the voicemail that we received regarding too many alcohol businesses within the city of Sebastopol, as that, that comment did apply to both items on the agenda tonight.
Thank you. With that, then I can close the public hearing and return to discussion by commissioners. I see Commissioner Fritz has his hand up. Oh, it's down.
Oh, I'm just trying to manage everything, putting my hand down.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. So, yeah, I appreciate the application. I appreciate having a different type of activity in the Barlow, particularly one that I think kids may enjoy. There's not really many sort of kid-related activities in the Barlow, other than the kind of, you know, playing pit, you know, with the big foam things. So I think that will be, you know, an option that will, you know, draw families and give families an option of something to do during the day when they're walking through the Barlow. I, just to go back to the snack comments, I like the idea of the kind of vending machine snack idea. It sort of seems to fit along with the whole kind of retro 80s theme. So I encourage the applicant to seriously consider that, because I think it is good to have some kind of less expensive snacks available. We all know the Barlow kind of food options are on the pricey side. So having some kind of less expensive, and, you know, we all know that sitting at a, you know, video game or pinball machine, you know, having something that you can just sort of pop into your mouth, it kind of just goes together in my mind. So I definitely would encourage you to consider that. I also wanted to commend you on getting your letters of support all in line. You got lots of letters of support for this item. I will note, it looked like there was, you know, some sort of recommended language. There was a lot of sort of repeated phrases in a lot of letters of support, but I think it's important to, you know, make sure that your supporters come out, because it, you know, at these meetings, it's sometimes hard to get people to come out and supporting an item. You know, I do, this is kind of a different concept, the kind of self-pour. I had some concerns about just the, you know, the lack of a sort of a gatekeeper to getting the alcohol. But, you know, I did a little research about kind of the self-pour kind of tap walls, and it does seem like there is, you know, level of security there. And I, you know, think having, you know, enough staff people, again, depending on the level of how busy the place is, to make sure that there's no kind of, you know, passing drinks to underage people going on. And, you know, that would happen in any kind of, you know, if there was alcohol in this environment, even if it's a bartender, I think you still need to have people passing through. It's not like a restaurant where you'll have underage people, because you have, you know, a waiter, a waitress kind of always checking in and walking around and being able to keep an eye on things. So this is a little bit different environment. So I just want to make sure that, you know, the staffing is appropriate to keep an eye on things. And I think, you know, hearing from the applicants that, you know, they have kids and they're, you know, really into that, you know, kind of environment. They understand the importance of that. And I think, again, you know, to keep your alcohol license and all that, you need to make sure you don't have any incidents. So I think it's, you know, really important that the applicant keeps the kind of staffing levels appropriate and make sure that no kind of underage drinking is going on. You know, we haven't really talked about the parking, but as I think Linda mentioned, you know, the staff report just kind of did drop off in the parking conversation on page five. I'm not sure y'all, you know, not surprised with this. I don't really have a concern about the parking, whether or not we require 4.6 spaces or 35 spaces. I mean, I think 35 actually sounds quite excessive. I wouldn't really be in favor of that. I don't think there's really going to be a parking issue. The Barlow has, you know, 70 surplus states, spaces at this moment, and it's fairly well-built out. There's not really much empty space at the Barlow that would be, you know, that we're going to have to save, you know, for the future. So I'm okay with leaving it at a 1 to 500 ratio personally. And otherwise, I think this is an interesting application, and I think we're kind of fortunate to Sebastopol to have this kind of unique, kind of entertainment and venue debut in Sonoma County and our community. Thanks. I think that's all I had for the moment.
Thank you. Commissioner Burns?
Yeah, I would just like to say that I really appreciate your presentation. And again, bringing this to Sebastopol, I think it is something Sebastopol has really been needing for a long time, is a place where people can have more fun safely. And I don't think this is just going to be for the families. I actually like that it's open early until later, because I have a feeling the 20-somethings and, you know, are going to come out later on at night and have something for them to do, you know, which Sebastopol has never, has never had. So I think it's a great use of the space and a great addition to our town. As far as the tap wall, you know, I was concerned about the comment of, you know, separating the alcohol and the non-alcohol. you know, but I feel, I feel, you know, completely like you have a solution where in the beginning, the card will only serve alcohol, will only be available to people over twenty-one until you can have a separation on the card itself, not the wall. Yes, as, 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 you know, stated that it's always a risk that someone's going to be passing alcohol to somebody in a bar who's underage, but I do feel like, you know, it would take away from the venue, in my opinion, to have a traditional bartender. This is just kind of the innovative thing that we really need in Sebastopol, to kind of catch up with the rest of the, you know, the world for our residents. And, you know, also I feel like there, in essence, really will be a bartender there, they're just not grabbing the pour, but they're there watching, manning the wall, it's a small wall, so it's not like it's, you know, going so wide that they couldn't see the whole wall, that would concern me, but, you know, they're going to be there. I like that they can engage and answer questions about the, about the, you know, what's on tap. And I think that adds a nice little, you know, they're not, they're not, you know, pouring, but they're getting to engage with the customers. And, yeah, I think overall, it's a, it's a really great, it's a really great use. I think it'll be interesting to see and we can keep our eyes open for, you know, we haven't had anything in Sebastopol open at this hour. I think at this point, Pizza Pizzaz at the other end of town is open the latest of anything and I think that's maybe midnight. So, yeah, I think that's what I have to say at this point too. But thank you guys for the innovation and bringing this and, and, yeah.
Don't see any other hands now. Linda, did you have comments for discussion?
Yeah, I do, a few. It sounds like there's support for snacks. One point is that if it's going to be open till two, their food trucks don't stay usually that late and the other restaurants that might benefit from delivery also won't be open. So it's just, I know, it is important to have a little carb, a little protein and I'm hoping that Commissioner Fritz's comment around your idea of a vending machine sounds adequate and fine with that. But I, what I didn't, what I didn't hear is support for more regional and local beverages that you'll be serving. And I'm hoping that that's your idea, we didn't talk about that. But I'm sure showcasing more regional or local or, you know, would be, would be very nice. And looking at the spirit of how the Barlow does, you know, really exemplify offering local. So those are my two, my two issues. I'm very pleased to have this venue. I hope that you guys don't burn out being there from nine to two in the morning, but you guys sound like the right folks to do it. So good luck to you.
Okay. Let's see, and Everett has recused himself from this meeting, so my comments. I've agreed with what most of the commissioners have said, I too am a little bit concerned about the hours. But I, and the food issue, especially because playing pinball generates a lot of adrenaline, at least for me. And seems like it would be good to have a little food to calm the nerves, especially with alcohol. But it looks like we're not requiring that, so to do so now would be another condition that we'd be adding if other commissioners are interested in entertaining that. My other concern is the hours when there are no food trucks. And when some food, I think, would be appropriate for that activity, just because of the adrenaline and the alcohol. I think the parking issue is fine as well. I do think it's a great activity for people. I think the, the sense that it's a little bit of a lounge where people can connect is also a good idea. So if those tables can group it all to accelerate that, that I think would be a good thing. But other than that, I, I think I just would like to ask other commissioners if, how they feel about the time issue and the having a requirement for some sort of snack provided, available, whether it's for charger, for free. So I see two hands up. Commissioner Fritz?
Thanks. I am okay with the two AM hours and I would anticipate they're probably not going to be open till two AM every day, because there's probably, you know, days where no one wants to be up at two AM, or not very many people. And I, I thought we always had a standard condition for bars, that there was some kind of food or snack requirement and I didn't see that in the conditions, is that?
I didn't see that here, I think we should add it in.
Yeah.
And if you, if I can share my screen, I've kind of been tracking what folks have been saying. So the original, what's in your staff report right now does have until twelve AM, which is what was in the original application. So if that is so changed by planning commission, that does need to be revised. And then, I can look for what our standard condition is, but this is just what I put in, in regards to Commissioner Kelly's comment about snacks. And the sense that I got that at least there was consensus that vending machines would be an appropriate way of offering snacks. But Commissioner Fritz, I'll try to see if I can't grab the, our standard conditions for alcohol permits, just to see. Because I do know that there, that's in our code and it, or somewhere and I.
Yeah, we usually.
We normally put that on.
We usually see that, not only, maybe it's in the other item from today as well, I didn't actually look for that. But yeah, I, again, I'm fine with the two AM, but I do think we should have a condition about the food service requirement while alcohol is served and that could be any kind of, you know, snack as well, not full meals. But other than that, I'm, yeah, that's good for, everything else is good.
Commissioner Burns, your comment?
Yes, I did not address the snack and I totally agree, there should be food at all times. I like the vending i, machine idea, I think it would be a cool addition, but however they do it, just some type of snack, I agree. And the other issue that was brought up was the local, you're trying to support other local, you know, beer. And that was what I had thought they said initially in their presentation, that they were trying to support other local. So I would, I would like that question answered, because I also think that that would be, you know, a nice addition and obviously not a condition, but if we knew that they had a sense of wanting to support other local, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Laszlo, would you like to answer that question now? You are muted.
Here we go, just about snacks.
The question was about local alcohol.
Oh, the local crafts, all right, yeah, yeah, and I think that's, yeah, I think Adam is definitely planning to do that, oh, here he is. And I know we're actually putting in a system for Barrel Brothers Brewing, just a little bit north in Windsor. So I know he's been looking at a lot of good craft beers that are local and most of our customers always do, you know, local craft, that is, that is definitely what people want and what's popular. So I don't see why he wouldn't do that, yeah. Sorry, I got kicked off my computer. I can chime in, sorry, sorry, Ed. Yeah, I, so most of, most of the taps will be local. I think it's just in terms of supporting the community in Sonoma County and a lot of the best beer actually is, is actually brewed, oh, this might be a subjective opinion. A lot of the best beers are brewed here, because many people come from all over the world to come and drink these kinds of beverages here, or at least beers, right? So, and also, I also wanted, there's another way is that me and Ed have talked about using this creative, creatively, was that we call it tap takeovers. So a brewery can come over and just, it will take over all the taps and it will be all just their, their beers. So for example, if Russian River Brewery wanted to use the space and take over our tap, our tap beer wall, it would be a huge way to kind of work with other businesses to kind of, and also create kind of a unique experience with, alongside their brand. So I hope I answered your question. I also would hope to be able to provide healthier options to, you know, to, to, to offer drinks to people who are non-drinkers. It can be guayaki, it could be anything that could be necessarily be tapped, I would like to offer other options, because I personally don't drink a lot myself, but I know people that are into beer. But I just want to create a lot of healthy alternatives to just being a beer wall. I mean, because Ed has also mentioned that anything that can be on tap can be offered, as long as it is not going against the license that we're getting for, which is the type forty license, beer sale, thank you.
Thank you.
So you could, I'm sorry, so you could do something like kombucha or anything that is tapable like that, that has that carbonation, because they do offer low, low alcohol kombucha and then the hard kombucha. You might want to even think about that, but I'm sure you have, I'm not going to, you know, tell you what all my favorites are, because that's not what we're here for. But thank you for that answer.
So back to the commissioners.
And Chair Ottinger, the condition that we normally have is that food must be available, made available during all times that alcohol is served. And so we can add that as that standard condition with the note that snacks qualify for that.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So as I see Commissioner Fritz's hand up, do you have a motion for us?
I do. I move that we approve the alcohol use permit for Rewind per the conditions and outlined in the staff report with the amendment that the hours be extended to two AM and with the addition of the requirement that food be served at all times, alcohol is served and that could include, you know, more snack kinds of food, not, does not be full meals. You know, like, like that. Although there's a spacing of space being offered.
Yeah, I see it, I saw it.
So anyway, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
I'll second, oh.
It's been moved in second, did with the addition of the condition of the standard conditions for snacks. So we're going to vote, I see the applicant is asking a question?
I am, I'm so sorry, I just saw on that report, I think it was still said midnight instead of two AM unless I looked at that wrong.
It's actually struck off, so.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Two is the motion, yeah, sorry, it's hard, it's hard to see.
Okay, and Adam, was that your question? Your hand, you are muted.
I just wanted to make sure that this, just that in the language, it was packaged snacks because of health, health department kind of issues, that the snacks would be packaged in the vending machine? Is there any way that we can get the language so that I don't have to deal with any of the health department issues?
Oh, yeah, Carrie, what do you?
I'm fine with that amendment.
Okay, and that snacks in the vending machine should be packaged?
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense to me, so.
Yeah, and that will be easier to get the health department to sign off on that.
Okay, so it's been moved in second with those two changes.
And so we do have an amended motion from Commissioner Fritz. Commissioner Kelly, do you, you were the second for that, are you amenable to that modification, the packaged snacks?
Yep.
Okay, so now you do have a motion on the floor.
Okay. And we have a second on, as well.
Yes.
Okay, so Carrie, would you call?
Sure, Commissioner Kelly?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burns?
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz?
Hi.
And Chair Ottinger?
Yes, and I'm very pleased that we solved just a couple little issues and not had to worry about the vending machines and the alcohol.
Excellent.
All the best.
Yeah, thank you.
And Adam and Edwards, I'm happy, or I'm happy to give you some non-alcoholic beer recommendations offline, because I'm a big fan of them, so. So that motion does pass four zero with one abstention from Vice Chair Fernandez. There is a, Adam, as you probably heard me say earlier, there is a seven-day appeal period. Your approval will be final end of day next Tuesday and after that, you maybe, we'll get this approval letter out to you and you can submit your building permit anytime after that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just jump in, I have a question, we had a draft minutes, but we didn't, there was no minutes in the agenda. Are we reviewing those minutes or not?
You're right. Thank you, it was in the packet, but it was not on the agenda, I forgot to put that on the agenda. So if you can, we can bump those to next time, yeah, yeah, since it's not agendized, sorry about my.
Had it in my other notes, but not, didn't read it off the agenda.
Which is good, Kathy, that's exactly the way to do it, you can only do what's on the agenda. Yeah, we'll have those before you, at your next meeting, and I'll probably have another set as well.
Okay.
A question, Kathy?
Yes, Linda?
When the council is reviewing the appeal, is this going to get to them in time? I forgot what date you said that was.
Yeah, that's part of my planning commission, planning director report, their appeal is next Wednesday, so we are submitting these as the draft minutes. And they'll be labeled, they're labeled draft, so it's just as they got you, but they do have them, they will have them. The agenda and packet for that should be posted in a couple of days.
And I guess, I wasn't at the meeting, so I didn't read them, because I would recuse myself from that vote, but I, I wonder if any other commissioners read that or if they had any issues that we know of.
And, and yeah, since it's not agendized, you can definitely get me any, please let me know offline if you have any issues with that. Thank you, Adam.
Yeah, I did have just a small clarification, so I will email you that, Carrie.
Okay, sounds great, thank you.
So do we actually have any regular agenda items? I don't see any here, are there other things we need to do?
We do not, just public hearings tonight.
Subcommittee updates. Are there any? Not seeing anything. So I see Everett's back, well, where, do you have a subcommittee update?
I don't at this point, thank you.
Okay, then the planning directors' report.
All right, thank you. So a couple of things, as I noted, the Little Sheldon Appeal is scheduled for next Wednesday, the thirty-first. I believe it's nine or nine thirty AM, I can't quite remember the exact, thank you, John, John's on it. And so if there is a planning commission liaison that is September, and I don't quite recall who is on in September, that would be great. We also have a planning, a city council meeting on the sixth. That agenda will include the planning commission work plan as a consent item. A, the public art committee is requesting small stipends for the artists and the art center as part of the Ice Park Sculpture Garden out of the Public Art Fund, that's also consent. We will have the final presentation of the Calder Creek Naturalization based on the recommendation from planning commission at your last meeting. And there will be a grand, the grand jury response discussion on the affordable housing production and affordable housing monitoring. And then I believe the engineering department will have the Caltrans grant confirmation from council. Uh, confirmation from council to apply for that grant. That's a sustainable communities grant. Uh, that Commissioner Fritz has talked about in the past. So that is all on September 6th. Um, other items going on, our housing element, uh, public comment period did end. We're still happy to take any comments and we're getting a, a slow trickle in from a few other folks. Um, we have, uh, we'll be submitting that, our draft to the state at the beginning of September. They have either 60 or 90 days. Uh, it used to be 60. I think the state increased it to 90 without giving us any more time. Small complaint. I'm ready to get my very small fiddle off for that one. The, uh, so, uh, so we will be submitting that and we'll have a little bit of a hey, this, uh, John and I at least, uh, on that uh, project for a couple of months while the state reviews it. And then it come December will be um, back to the drawing board and may have an item for you in either December, uh, hopefully December. And then uh, it is required to be adopted by the end of January. Um, so we are getting down to the wire, although I believe we're actually going to be the first county, uh, community in Sonoma County to submit to the state. So, uh, we're, we're still, we still have time to, to work everything. Uh, but we did get a number of really excellent comments from folks. A lot of support for community land trust and land trust um, as stewards for affordable housing. Um, a lot of support for ADUs and in general, trying to make things a little bit easier. Some concerns about water availability, uh, as you can imagine with the drought. Um, and John, I don't know if you have any other um, comments that stick out in your mind. Uh, we just reviewed these with the consultant uh, yesterday to go through them all, so they can prepare the, uh, some edits to the report before we submit it.
I think the workforce housing overlay district was another item that uh, we did see some um, support for in kind of allowing more residential uses in our commercial office spaces, but sure.
Thank you, yes.
Most, mostly vacant um, this time and age now, so.
Yes. Okay, and then um, I think that's it. I think, John, you have some facade improvement grants coming up to the DRB and a tour as well?
Yes, I have one facade improvement program that was submitted uh, last Monday. Um, we also have the Habitat for Humanity Designer Review um, coming up at their next meeting. And then we also um, are scheduling a second part of um, tours of past projects where um, I go with the DRB members and uh, Carrie and look at previous projects that they approved and see how much those projects have potentially changed over time, um, from what they originally looked at, um, as far as concepts go. And um, allows me to kind of get a better understanding of what they're looking for when they review those designer view packages from applicants.
Yeah, and for those of you who are interested in that, it is open to the public, just as any of our public meetings. So if you're interested, um, I think some of the projects this time go around are in the Barlow. Um, and actually one of them is the, the kind of the building where the arcade that you just approved is.
Yeah, so the uh, the, or the places that we have are Woodford, the Fern Bar, the um, the Barlow sign that's out on Highway 12 there, just to kind of look at that. And then also um, the Barlow Towns, which just finished up and are open now. So that was the other one that we added on.
Right, so sort of the east side of town, uh, of downtown, great. Um, I do anticipate for the commission, we will have our September 13th meeting. Um, of course, we have the Smokehouse BBQ has continued to the night, that night. And it looks like we will have a couple of other use permits. So um, we definitely want to make sure we have a form for that. Um, I have a note that Everett is going to be out of town, but can participate if needed. So Everett, if you're there um, or offline, if you can let me know if you'll be available for that, that would be great. Uh, just so, and we do have one item, which I believe one of our commissioners will need to recuse themselves from. Um, and so I do want to just make sure we get a court account for that.
Uh, Carrie, Carrie, what was that date?
It's the September 13th meeting.
Yeah, I'll be available for that.
Okay, great. All right, and then it looks like we do have a window at the end of September, towards the end of September to do, before it starts getting too dark at night, to do a tour of the parks. Um, or one or two parks, depending on how. And so I'm meeting with um, Chair Ottinger next uh, Tuesday to talk a little bit more about that. Um, on the parks front, I can note that I, uh, the Libby Park Pond is going to future be free range. Thank you, uh, planning commission for your, or parks commission for your uh, recommendation. I did pass that on, that hey, if you're taking the fence down, please don't put it back. Um, and city attorney has reviewed that and sees, uh, we don't see any reason to that. There is a preschool that is renting the Good Cars Out Building. And I've spoken with um, that individual and they have the fence around their own, you know, uh, children's uh, play yard for the preschool as required. And so she was, she didn't see any issues with that um, either. Um, and she's actually looking at potentially putting a Patreon, Amiott uh, sculpture near her building. Uh, so that'll be going to the public earths uh, committee at their next uh, meeting and then to city council. So a lot of, a lot of fun stuff happening in some of the parks. Um, I'm also planning on meeting with the Rotary in a couple of weeks with Bontae about a potential fundraising uh, for some of the Ice Park work. So I'm trying to keep that on a roll and I may, Kathy, and Everett, if you're able to, as vice chairmaker, meeting next Tuesday, um, talk to you about that a little bit as well. So, so we're organized for that.
Okay.
Yeah, um, so Carrie, on the Libby Park, um, when they take the fence down, is there a certain amount of landscaping that might need to occur? I haven't looked at it recently, is that?
I don't think so. I think it's pretty much grass. Okay, through and through. And obviously they'll probably dig out the posts or cover them up. You know, they, they'll certainly make it look nice as Eric and, and his team generally, and generally do. Um, oh, the other note, um, we have had a couple of planning director approvals. This was sort of a new thing that was included in the 2018 code to, to make things a little bit easier for some of the smaller uh, use permits. Um, and actually both of them are for dog grooming, uh, which is animal hospitals and those types of things, as long as they don't include boarding, uh, you can go to the planning director. Uh, and so we've approved both of those. One is um, uh, in the, I don't know what the shopping center is called, John, where um, where Starbucks used to be, where Acre Coffee is.
Gravinson Station, I think. On that side, no?
No, that's the one that's across from the Barlow. Um, it's, it's, it's the shopping center with um, Acre Coffee Hall on the wall and Viet House. So in the corner there. And then there's another one further down uh, on Gravinson Avenue South.
Yeah.
Which used to be a hair salon, I believe.
A loose hair salon, I believe is what it was.
Yeah, actually both of them used to be hair salons, so. People, people are getting like me, I guess. I'm just whacking their hair off in a ponytail. But wanting to make sure their dogs are clean. And I think that's about it uh, for my report, but I'm happy to answer any questions. So I did get a question from uh, in the general public, which the commission might be interested in, about why Ned Khan's artwork was removed from the hotel uh, site, the, the Hotel Sebastopol site. I don't know the specifics behind that, but I did meet with the Hotel Sebastopol a, a few weeks back. And they are getting ready to put the building permit likely to start next spring. Um, but as you may recall, their entitlements, their planning entitlement expires in October. Um, they are planning on pulling their permits prior to then. Uh, I believe they actually had, they had to rebid the project and it's up to bid right now. Um, they are working with SSU to do the archaeology that they need to do on the site. I think this fall is when they're gonna try to do it before the rains, so. It's just in general. If, if someone's asking that from the general public, I figure you guys should know about it too.
Yeah, thank you. Paul, I see your hand up.
Yeah, um, I just, I was looking at the um, liaison list, cause you mentioned maybe having someone at the um, appeal next week. And I, it's actually still August. It's August.
Oh, you're right. It is still August, so you.
And, and me, but I am actually out of town that day, so I, I will not be available.
Am I the backup, Carrie?
You are the backup, however, since you were the lone vote against it. Um, I don't know if, you know, you can, uh, if you feel comfortable representing the majority of the planning commission deliberations, which is what that planning commission liaison usually is asked to do.
Yeah, I mean, what do you, I, I mean, I, I feel comfortable.
Usually they have questions about the, the deliberations that the commission had. And uh, the basis of the appeal is twofold. It is uh, that the burden of proof was not met uh, by the applicant, which is the, one of the primary things that the planning commission considered. Uh, and then the secondary is that uh, the appellant does not feel that the conditions are enforceable.
Okay, so what would my role, I have no problem being completely objective and, and just saying, but I don't really, maybe, can you and I talk? I don't know that.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can talk offline. It's, it's not too, usually the, they, the, the city council, just for everyone who, because I don't think everyone on this, in this group has been a liaison to the planning commission yet. Uh, the uh, the role for the liaison is um, to, to really be there in case the city council has questions that aren't apparent in the minutes um, about how the commission's deliberations and what their thought process was in terms of, um, you know, how you got to the conditions of approval um, and your decision. And so certainly, Mr. Burns, you were very involved with the condition crafting.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure, but let's talk, uh, you know, when we're not in everyone's time. I'm not sure I'm the right person, because I feel like all the commissioners had hesitations and it was a really difficult, you know, decision for everybody. So I don't want to come off if I talk about, you know, the commissioners, how they came to it, thinking that, you know, I'm just, I'm just putting my point of view out there. Do you know what I mean? Like?
Yes. Yeah, I can give you a call tomorrow, uh, or we can set up a time to talk tomorrow. That's fine.
That sounds great, yeah.
Okay, and then the other one that I think um, uh, would be helpful is if we have for September 6th for the Calder Creek presentation. Um, and I don't know if um, any of the commissioners, I, I believe uh, Commissioner Burns, you, you're, since you're the backup for August, you're the primary for September.
Oh.
And me, so we can talk about that one tomorrow. It's, it's a lot to ask, cause it's probably, you know, six hours or so between those two meetings, so.
Yeah.
I, I can be there as part of the subcommittee, the.
Everett, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
I would plan to be, too, just to see what they're saying.
Great, excellent. So, so we, so we have the six covered, so that's perfect. All right, thank you very much. And thank you, Commissioner Fritz, for pulling up the liaison list so quickly.
Very excited. I had a feeling it was me, because there was something that was like earlier in the month that I, that I was gonna miss. And when you said next week, and I don't think that's quite September yet. I think it's.
Right, you're right, cause we had the Habitat at the beginning of the month, which.
Oh yeah, that was, that was, yeah.
John just took the show on their own and he was great, so.
So it looks like we're uh, ready for an adjournment, if there's nothing else to be discussed. And it's only 8:05. Isn't that great?
Wow.
Uh, it's actually uh, 11:05 here, but.
You're, you're in New York, Everett? Where are you?
Uh, I'm in South Haven, Michigan.
Oh.
Which is beautiful, right on the beach.
Wonderful. Good for you. If you go to Red Wing, go to the Red Wing Hotel and, and say hi to my sister.
Oh, okay.
Okay, well, with that, I will adjourn the meeting uh, until September 13th, 2022 at 6:00 PM.
Thanks, everyone. Carrie, if you want to call me now, I, you know, I have time now.
Excellent, I'll do that. Alright, thanks.
Okay, bye.
Hello.